I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, Tuesday, April 11th, at 7:03 PM. Motion to open the meeting?
So may it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gito.
Here.
Mr. McCrisky?
I am here.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Here.
Mr. Carrera?
Here.
And I am here as well. I ask that you stand to salute our flag if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, I would like to recognize Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We lost another member of Stoughton recently, just the other day. He's a past town meeting rep and a longtime member of Stoughton Fish and Game, Scott Hersey. He was the owner of Hersey Construction of Stoughton. He started it, he owned it, he grew it. Scott passed away from a very serious illness at a very early age. He was too young to leave his family and the town. I would like to extend our deepest sympathy to his son Scott Jr., his daughter, Scott's mother, and his sister from the Board of Selectmen in the town of Stoughton. But most of all, I'd like to say to his son Scott, and if anybody knows about this, I do, I'd like to say that we learn from the master and we strive to do better. But sometimes they leave us suddenly and there's a lot of wonder. You do not have to wonder because he left. He left a lot for you and when he went, he knew he could go because you would be all right. So from the town of Stoughton, the Board of Selectmen, God bless the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carrera, for those warm thoughts and memories.
His nickname is Father Scott.
Huh?
His nickname is Father Scott.
In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. This meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. The first order of business for tonight is our reorganization. This is the first Select Board meeting following Tuesday's April 4th election. It is required to occur as our first order of business. The process will be delegated to our town manager, Mr. Coulter. With that, Mr. Coulter, that I pass the gavel to you to conduct this.
What a privilege to have this gavel for the next minute and a half. I'm very grateful. As the chair lady said, it is both required and customary that this board reorganize its chairman and vice chairmanship. Historically, this board has not voted a clerk because staff provides that role, but this evening we will, not we, the board, the members will choose a chair and a vice chair. Let me say just a couple of words about the process. When we begin the process, we will ask for nominations from the members. If there is one nominee, we will end the process and we'll ask that nominee if he or she wishes to accept the nomination. If that's the case, I will call for a roll call vote on the nominee. If there are two nominees entered into the process, we will ask both nominees if they accept, if elected, will they accept the nomination? If they say yes, we will move forward to a roll call vote, which we will ask each vote going from Mr. Gito in this direction, what they, how they would vote on the nominees. Once that is complete, I'll close the process. The chairperson will be elected and then I will return the gavel to the elected chairperson to conduct the same process for the vice chairmanship. Any questions on the process from the members? So with that, I would like to formally open nominations for chairman of the Select Board for the town of Stoughton. Do I hear any recommendations? Yes, Mr. Cavie?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Deborah Roberts for chair.
Deborah Roberts for chair.
Please, yeah.
But fought by Mr. Cavie. Are there any other nominees? No second is required. Ms. Roberts, if, since you are the nominee, if elected, would you accept the nomination?
Yes, I will, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. So with that, I will call for a vote, roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavie?
Yes.
And Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Ms. Deborah Roberts will continue on as the chair lady of the Stoughton Board of Selectmen. Congratulations, Deborah.
Thank you. I would like to first thank all of you for reelecting me. I would like to thank you for the nomination and I would like to pledge that I would continue on with our strategy that we discussed and we agreed upon as our first priority of business. And that is economic development, that is finding solutions for our seniors, especially senior housing, that is supporting small businesses, and that's under the umbrella of our economic development, and that is keeping Stoughton safe and keeping Stoughton clean. I pledge that to you and so thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that said, moving right along, for nominations of vice chair. Mr. Carrera?
I'd like to nominate Lou Gito for vice chair.
From my fellow board members, are there any other nominations? Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Nominate Steve Cavie for vice chair.
Thank you very much. First, I will ask if Mr. Gito will accept the nomination?
Yes.
Second, I will ask Mr. Cavie if he will accept the nomination?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito, and thank you, Mr. Cavie. Now for, on the vote, Mr. Gito.
It would be a name.
For either Mr. Gito or...
Mr. Gito.
I will ask Mr. McCrisky.
Mr. Cavie.
I will ask Mr. Cavie.
I will vote for myself, Mr. Cavie.
I will ask Mr. Carrera.
Mr. Gito.
And I vote for Mr. Cavie. On the vote, congratulations, Vice Chair Cavie.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So this is, will be, I think, I'm coming on five years now at, if I'm mistaken, I could, I could be wrong. It seems like forever. But it's been, it's been a wonderful ride. I've had the opportunity to very briefly be chair after Christine Howe left for Idaho. That was only for, I think, two or three months. Beyond that, I've been the vice chair a couple of times now. This, I think, is my third time around and it's, it's, it's been a really wonderful experience working as underneath, as vice chair for both Christine Howe and last year for, for Deborah Roberts. I look forward to, to, you know, helping her fulfill the mission that we've identified as our priorities and I will continue to be faithful lieutenant, helping you out however I possibly can as you work through the, the leadership of, of the Select Board. It's, it could be a significant challenge, but I want to be here for you however I can. So thank you and thank you to the rest of the board for entrusting me with this role again.
Congratulations, folks.
Congratulations. Thank you so very much. Moving right along, this is to designate a designee and an alternate to sign the warrants. Currently, Vice Chair Cavie takes the lead on signing off on the bi-weekly warrants and I am the backup. Did you want to have any changes to that or would you, does anyone else, do you want to maintain your, your role or any changes to those designations?
I'm happy to continue on. I've made it just part of my, my routine. I think I've been doing this actually since I started on the board, so about five years. And so I'd be happy to continue on with this if somebody would like to, to pick it up though. I won't challenge that.
Is there anyone else interested? I am also interested in being backup. It's part of my routine as well and it helps with consistency. Okay, no changes there. The next is, are you interested or should we discuss committee reassignments or should we, the representatives or liaisons to our committees, boards, and commissions remain the same such as school, FinCom, CPC, planning, SRA, and SEOC, which is Stoughton Equal Opportunity? So currently Cavie, Vice Chair Cavie is the liaison to the school committee. Mr. Cavie is the liaison to FinCom. There's an absent or vacancy for the liaison for CPC. Mr. McCrisky is the liaison to, unofficially, but he's always there, unofficially, to the planning committee. Vice Chair Cavie and Mr. Carrera are the liaisons to the SRA and Vice Chair Cavie and I are the liaisons to the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. Should we revisit that or are we all set with those assignments?
I didn't see his hand up.
Lou, would you want to be the CPC liaison? Oh, it's on. Doesn't matter.
Who else wants to do that? That'd be fun.
Great.
Great. I don't think we have to take a vote on that. It's just as, as an agreement. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Did you say? Could I have everyone's undivided attention, please? I'd like to use my time here tonight to recognize one of our residents who is also a member of our school committee, Mr. Armando Barbosa. Are you here tonight, online or in the audience?
He is not.
He is not. Mr. Barbosa, I would like to express, because I'm sure someone will pass the word on to him and he will see the recording of this meeting, to express my thanks, my sincere gratitude, and my heartfelt appreciation to you on behalf of myself as chair and as a resident of the community, on behalf of this board, and on behalf of the town of Stoughton. As some of you know, there was an oversight during the April 4th election. Mr. Barbosa should have appeared on the ballot as a candidate for the school committee and as a candidate for precinct four town meeting representative. Mr. Barbosa, however, only appeared on the ballot as a candidate for the school committee. He very deservedly was elected to the school committee. He was not, however, elected as a town meeting representative. Once we learned of this mistake, a number of us reached out to Mr. Barbosa directly to apologize, to oppress, express our sympathy and to express our frustration. We also look for a solution, but as you might imagine, there is no real remedy for something like this that would be entirely fair or complete. While we in town government looked for a remedy, it was Mr. Barbosa himself that offered us a path forward. I was impressed to learn that while Mr. Barbosa was disappointed, he was more concerned with moving forward in a manner that was best for the town of Stoughton. In this day and age where people are often quick to exploit opportunities to create division and conflict, Mr. Barbosa, look for a way to heal, move on, and forge a path forward so that it won't happen to another candidate. So for all of these reasons, I want to thank Mr. Barbosa and express our gratitude. I would like to also tell Mr. Barbosa just how impressed I am with his composure, his understanding, and his dedication to public service and to the community. Mr. Barbosa, you are an example of Stoughton at its finest and I thank you sincerely. Thank you very much. I have another letter and this is from a resident, the town of Stoughton. He wanted this to be read into the record. It's a letter of recognition. It's from a town resident, Mike Hardman, who resides at 17 Jackson Court. His statement reads, "Dear Board Members, with deep respect and gratitude to the Stoughton Fire and EMTs, I ask you to enter this correspondence in the town's public record. On the afternoon of Saturday, March 27th, 2023, I suffered a major cardiac event and needed attention of Stoughton EMTs to get me to immediate treatment at Good Samaritan Hospital in Brockton, which helped lead to a successful outcome for me. I am now recovering and getting back to normal activities. From the time the 911 call was placed and I arrived and was put into the care of the emergency staff at the hospital, the professionalism of the EMTs was very evident as they worked together as a team using the excellent instruction and training they have received. Clearly, my outcome could have been very different if not for their efforts. My family and I are extremely grateful to Chief Michael Carroll and his team for their care and professionalism. I am thankful to be able to write this correspondence to you and we are fortunate to have an understanding fire department we can count on when we need them most. Thank you. With deep respect, Mike Hardman, 17 Court, Jackson Court, Stoughton." Thank you very much. And before we go to Select Board comments, I would like to take an item out of order and that item is item number eight, swearing-in ceremony. Firefighters John Goldberg, Megan Hill, and Anthony McCauley, please step forward, also Chief Carroll and all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And thank you for that letter. That was a surprise, but I'm not surprised that I get multiple calls over the, over the course of the week from citizens on, on the professionalism and I take no credit for that. That goes to the, do you guys hear that? EMTs? And paramedics. That's just some little bit of, I think we only have a few EMTs left, but really it shows their professionalism. It's, it's uncontested and I think that's what leads us into our ability to recruit and bring in new hires. The three people in front of you, firefighter Hill, firefighter McCauley, and firefighter Goldberg are all excellent, excellent recruits. Firefighter Hill and firefighter Goldberg both attended the Fire Academy at Brockton Fire. This was the first time Stoughton firefighters have been allowed to participate at the Brockton Fire Academy and maybe the last time because I think Brockton was trying to recruit them. They were so good. They were excellent, excellent. I got nothing but rave reviews, scored extremely high on all their, all their skills, their tests. Myself and the assistant chief knew when we were hiring these three, you know, we're, we're very lucky here and they're lucky. They're going to be working with probably, you know, and maybe I'm a little biased, but probably the most professional, aggressive, smart department in the area. And they show it day in, day out. And, and I think that's why even as early as yesterday, we have phone calls and meetings with people wanting to transfer to Stoughton. And that's an testament to the, to the men and women on the street. We just kind of guide it, but they're the ones that deserve all that credit and they're the ones that are putting Stoughton Fire Department on the map without, throughout the Commonwealth. That being said, Stephanie, if you want to come up, if you don't mind, we'd like to, because the families are here, we'd like to do it one by one, even though they're all being sworn in as firefighters. First firefighter is, as you guys, as many might know, two of these hires are Stoughton, Stoughton kids themselves, which is something I've been trying to push for and Anthony's a transfer, he came in from Foxborough Fire. So we know when we're taking from Foxborough Fire, we're doing, we got a pretty good name for ourselves. So if, is your dad pinning you?
Both parents.
Both parents? Sure. If the parents, Mr. and Mrs. Goldberg, Jack and Joanne, if you, Greg and Joanne, if you want to come up. Jack's an outstanding candidate, very proud to have him. He, he looks a little bit like his brother, Justin. Not so much like Greg, but that's okay. Yeah, he lucked out.
Okay, John, you want to raise your right hand and you want to repeat after me, starting with I state your name?
I, John Goldberg.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter for the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts?
As a firefighter for the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts.
I will bear true faith?
I'll be of true faith.
And allegiance to?
And allegiance to.
And will uphold and defend?
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will obey and be bound?
I will obey and be bound.
By such rules and regulations?
By such rules and regulations.
As are now?
As are now.
Or may be established?
Or may be established.
By the town of Stoughton and its fire department?
By the town of Stoughton or its fire department.
I state your name?
I, John Goldberg.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge?
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself?
Hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
Others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the Constitution?
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the Stoughton Fire Department?
And the Stoughton Fire Department.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I state your name?
I, John Goldberg.
Hereby accept the position?
Hereby accept the position.
Of firefighter?
Of firefighter.
For the town of Stoughton.
Town of Stoughton.
Congratulations.
We will get pictures downstairs. You're not getting that away that easy, Goldie. Megan, who's pinning you?
John.
Your parents?
The M.R. Mr. and Mrs. Selig, please come forward.
Jack's got it.
Can you sign right next to me?
Megan Hill.
Thank you.
Is he good?
So you'll go right through here, John. When they're all done, all three of you.
Okay, Megan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, starting with I state your name?
I, Megan Hill.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As firefighter?
As firefighter.
For the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts?
For the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts.
I will bear true faith?
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to?
And allegiance to.
And will uphold and defend?
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will obey and be bound?
I will obey and be bound.
By such rules and regulations?
By such rules and regulations.
As are now?
As are now.
Or may be established?
Or may be established.
By the town of Stoughton and its fire department?
By the town of Stoughton and its fire department.
I state your name?
I, Megan Hill.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge?
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character, a public trust?
My character, a public trust.
I will always have the courage to?
I will always have the courage to.
Hold myself?
Hold myself.
And others?
And others.
Accountable for our actions?
Accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the Constitution?
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the Stoughton Fire Department?
And the Stoughton Fire Department.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I state your name?
I, Megan Hill.
Hereby accept the position?
Hereby accept the position.
Of firefighter for the town of Stoughton.
Of firefighter for the town of Stoughton.
Congratulations. Okay, Anthony. Okay, Anthony, raise your right hand. We're going to start with "I state your name."
I, Anthony McCauley.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As firefighter?
As firefighter.
For the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts?
For the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to?
I will bear true faith and allegiance to.
And will uphold and defend?
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will obey and be bound?
I will obey and be bound.
By such rules and regulations?
By such rules and regulations.
As are now?
As are now.
Or may be established?
Or may be established.
By the town of Stoughton?
By the town of Stoughton.
And its fire department?
And its fire department.
I state your name?
I, Anthony McCauley.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge?
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or public trust?
Or public trust.
I will always have the courage to?
I will always have the courage to.
Hold myself?
Hold myself.
And others accountable?
And others accountable.
For our actions?
For our actions.
I will always have the courage to?
I will always have the courage to.
I apologize, I just read that. I will uphold the Constitution?
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the Stoughton Fire Department?
The Stoughton Fire Department.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I state your name?
I, Anthony McCauley.
Hereby accept the position of?
Hereby accept the position of?
Firefighter?
Firefighter.
For the town of Stoughton?
For the town of Stoughton.
Congratulations.
Families, we can take pictures downstairs in front of the flags. It actually came out really nice last year. Board? Board, thank you very much for allowing us to have this time. I think it's important for not only the firefighters, the families, but also, you know, us as a department. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that a lot of the buzzword and a few people who have called looking to transfer over to Stoughton recognize the support the fire department has through the board and the residents and all the big things that are happening here. And we thank you and we thank the residents for their support. Thank you again.
Let's take a five-minute recess, please. Okay. The Select Board meeting of April 11th will reconvene at 7:42 PM. And we'll go back to our agenda item number three, which is Select Board Comments. So does anyone have a Select Board comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do.
Oh. Vice Chair Kayvey.
Well, so I just wanted to sort of say the obvious. We just had an election last week. And on the Select Board, we had the incumbents return. I'm very happy to be working with you, with you both again. So I'm looking forward to a really productive year. And there's many seats where we have some new folks who are popping in. But anybody who took the time and made the effort to run for, you know, these are all volunteer positions. I just wanted to thank them for taking the time, spending the energy to volunteer for your community, even if you didn't win the election. I think that we really can't move forward as a town. It's very difficult if we don't have people willing to sort of stick their necks out for the community, take the risks, and advocate for the positions. So anybody who ran, I just wanted to thank you personally for having done it. It makes our democracy healthier. I think that our voter turnout was just slightly north of 5%, if I'm not mistaken. And that has, that number's been going down every year for four years, years and years. Unfortunately, that is not something that we can really tolerate. If we want to have a healthy democracy, we can't have 5% of eligible voters coming out and speaking. That really does not actually represent the community. And I don't know exactly what to do about that, certainly not as a Select Board member. But it's something that I would like to try to focus in on over, you know, maybe the next three to five years, to see what measures we have to take, even if it requires, you know, analysis by, you know, external parties, a contractor, somebody who can come in, consultants, and tell us, you know, what's going on, how to make it better. Because we just can't have such a low civic involvement in a democratic process. We just end up with the 5% of sort of governmental insiders, essentially, people who are the very few people who are heated in on most things, deciding how we're all going to live. Now, if people don't want to participate, I guess they kind of get what they pay for in a sense, right? And they get who they get, and there's not much they can do about that. I just don't really think that's fair. There's a lot of people who need a lot of things in this community. There's people who need to be, for whom we need to advocate. But also, we can't just wait around for somebody else to come in and save the day. Like, we are the people who do that. It's the citizens of the town that run this democracy. And if we don't step up, there's nobody else who's going to do it for us. So I'm not telling anybody, anybody who's watching this, anybody who's here listening to this already knows this. So I'm not telling anybody anything they don't know. But I do want to start exploring what we can do to make this better. We've tried a bunch of different things, and none of them have helped. And I think that it's worth perhaps getting somebody outside to take a look, to see what they can do to help us. Or just to tell us, this is the way, you know, this is the way it's going in the entire state, in the entire country. It's just people just aren't voting anymore. But if that's the case, then I guess we're just doing what everyone else is. But if there's anything we can do to fix this, I want to be a part of that. So that's it. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kayvey, for your comments. Next, Mr. Gilda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the previous speaker. It's a big problem. But on to something else, and I don't know where else to talk about this, so I'm going to talk about it right here. Today, I checked on the discussion between SMAC and the town, and where we were in that process. And I called Bill Hewig, our attorney dealing with the SMAC issues. And he told me he got a call from the SMAC attorney some time ago. He apparently was not told he should be discussing with SMAC the issues that he found. So instead of setting up a time to meet with SMAC, he told the SMAC attorney to put any items in a letter and send them to him. So I suggested he call you, the Chair, to get directions. I hope he will be told to work with SMAC, to work through the issues, which is, I think, what we had agreed to a couple weeks ago. So we've got 14 days or 15 days sort of into a 45-day process. We might want to think about, as the process continues, whether we want to extend the time on that. But that's for another day. But I hope that you will give him the opportunity to work with SMAC and see if we can work through that list of issues that need to be addressed. So that's my point.
Thank you very much. I would like, my response to that is, yes. However, we would like scheduling to go through Gilda. And also, we did write a letter to the SMAC board specific to Mr. Stagnone and asked if he had any questions that he wanted, or he and his board and his attorneys to talk. Please schedule the meeting through Gilda. And that was also in writing. So I don't know where the confusion came in, but we'll restate that, that Gilda is the one that's coordinating the scheduling, just to be fair to both sides and with the flexibility in keeping things organized. So that's where we left off. And that's why, you know, I had that kind of question, like, oh, well, where did the breakdown occur? But I'll reinforce that. Oh, yes, Mr. Carrera. Oh, not to ignore what you're saying, but I think we're going to come back. Maybe Mr. Carrera has another comment.
I have a comment on what's being discussed. I thought when we left it that night, was to address the issues and then bring back their importance, our changes, to us. They threw lawyers at us first. We didn't throw lawyers at them. Our lawyer handled them all the time. I was with him when we first signed the stuff, way back when. So I don't think it should be a back and forth, let's help them. They were told to address their issues. Attorney Hewig, Bill wrote down to us what the failures were. I don't want to discuss them, but I don't think we should have back and forth at up times. They had time set for a stroke. Mr. McCrisky gave them 15, then it was 30, then it was 45 days. They get 45 days to fix their problem. We are not going to fix their problem. They're supposed to run what they're doing. I don't want back and forth with our attorney. I don't think we should be paying our attorney anything other than what we have just done. It's up to them to prove to this board what they're going to do, and then we make the decision. I don't need to pay my attorney to try to tell us what they're trying to tell us, and then everything gets mixed up. So I think that's the way it's got to be. That's the way I thought we left it. That's what I voted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Didn't know this was going to come up tonight, but thank you, Mr. Carrera. You were spot on. This is not a debate, and we're not going to allow this to be a debate. This is an organization that had an operating agreement with the town of Stoughton that is visibly, and backed up by the attorney, that there is not even a contract at this point. It's been terminated under its own, so it's not a debate. And there were multiple, multiple sites where their own operating agreement, their bylaws have been not adhered to. So that's exactly what this is. This was their opportunity, and I mentioned several times, to submit a corrective action plan. That doesn't need a lawyer, you know? And again, to back up what Mr. Carrera said, you know, the last few minute meetings that they've attended, there's been two attorneys with them each time. So if they choose to do it with attorneys, fine. But all we're looking for within 45 days is a corrective action plan. That's it. Submit a corrective action plan. We'll review that corrective action plan and see what, if anything, we want to do. Because right now, we don't have to do anything. So it just, you know, I want to see us remain clear on the facts. These are facts. So I don't, as well, I'm not going to get into a lawyer thing where our lawyer is coaching them on what they have to respond to. That doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Carrera.
You know I take notes.
Yes, excellent notes.
This is the way we left it. Give time for SMAC to get priorities straight and give a Give time for SMAC to get priorities straight and give a layout to fix the problem. That was pretty much, it was, motion was made by Joe, seconded by me, 45 days.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. I just wanted to follow up to the board. After that meeting that we referenced, the letter to Mr. Stagnone, which is dated, it's a certified letter, dated March 30, 2023, it says, Dear Mr. Stagnone and members of the Board of Directors. At its meeting held on March 28, 2023, the Stoughton Select Board voted to grant Stoughton Media Access Corporation a period of no longer than 45 days to review the attached evaluation report executed by KP Law PC. During this period, the SMAC Board of Directors may present to this board comments and/or corrective action plan to be taken to address the issues outlined in the said report. Furthermore, Attorney William Hewig III has been authorized to represent this board in any and all meetings or discussions with you or your representative relative to this matter. Please reach out to Gilda Pereira at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or by email, epereira@stoughton-ma.gov for scheduling. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the office. Sincerely, Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board Chair, copied of Select Board Town Manager's Office, KP Law PC. So I'm in agreement with what you're saying, Mr. Carrera, and what you're saying also, Mr. McCrisky, and hope this is an update to you, Mr. Gito, if you weren't informed before.
Apparently, Mr. Hewig didn't read that letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I'm sure I got that. I don't remember seeing it. I will look again.
Thank you very much.
But that wasn't what I thought we had agreed to. I'm not suggesting that I'll go back and I'll listen to that section again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Are there any other Select Board comments? Moving right along, Town Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements this evening. As you've been informed, our Vets Agent, Sean Bautrica, will be leaving our employment and moving on to a big job with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in their Veterans Affairs Department. Sean has been a valuable asset to this community, and I know you'll all have the opportunity later on, as he presents his plan, to share with him your thoughts on his time with Stoughton. Second thing I'd like to announce is this Thursday, members of the town staff, including myself and Mr. Tisdale and the town clerk and others, will be hand-delivering the two books, which contain our Town Meeting warrant, to each of the Town Meeting members. It's the first time ever Town employees are going to be visiting homes and delivering these packages to Town Meeting members. It's our attempt to provide a more personal service to Town Meeting members and to answer any questions they may have, whereas putting on Facebook, announcing we'll be visiting with them. We'll be sending emails in advance that were coming on Thursday, so there'll be no surprises when Chief McNamara and Chief Carroll show up in their command vehicles to deliver their books. And there'll be a cover letter with it. This will be the earliest the Town Meeting books, in this case, duplicate books, will be delivered to Town Meeting members. And I think it's appropriate at this time to thank and to congratulate the Finance Committee. They took the lead on creating the books. We're doing the printing and delivering them, but they did, I've reviewed the draft, the final copy, I should say, and they did an extraordinary job. No one is going to suggest, even for a moment, that motions are not supported by a tremendous amount of data and information. So I just want to offer my congratulations to the Chair of the FinCom for his efforts and the efforts of his Vice Chair, and for all of their members. The next announcement is from our Town Treasurer, Paula Newt. We'd like to remind the Stoughton taxpayers that the FY '23 third and fourth quarter real estate and fourth quarter personal property tax bills are due May 1st. The calendar year 2023 motor vehicle excise tax bills were mailed to our residents on March 8 and were due on April 7. All tax bills may be paid online at stoughton.org, and a drop box is located at Town Hall for taxpayers' convenience. Next announcement is the Public Information Session. This is a note from SMAC to my office, announcing that we will cover the Town Managers' Public Information Session on Thursday, this Thursday, April 13, at 6:00 p.m. There is also a Planning Board meeting on Thursday at the library. We will do both meetings live. That's SMAC's announcement. The residents who'd like to watch the Planning Board meeting can watch it on Verizon Channel 28 and Comcast Channel 9. It starts at 7:00 p.m. They will not be able to watch it on our website. Town Managers' Public Forum will be streamed live on our website. And the next issue has to do with that Public Information Session. April 13, Public Information Session deals with the facts supporting the rate structure for water, sewer, and solid waste. It's not a hearing where votes will be taken. It's not a hearing of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will be taking up the hearing at a later date. This is the Board's attempt to share good, quantitative, undisputable information before they conduct their public hearing. So this is an information hearing that'll talk about where we are, how we arrived here, and what the options are for moving forward. And then on a follow-up meeting, the Board will take up the decision-making process on how we're going to address and tackle the challenges we've got within these three organizations. Those are my announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Moving right along to Citizens' comment. Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
Are we going to get a copy of the material ahead of time?
It's a great question, Mr. Gito.
Certainly is.
We're going to send out tomorrow to each of the Board members a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we're doing.
Thank you.
And obviously, we'll amend it with Citizen feedback for the presentation for your public hearing as well.
Should I ask a question?
Please do.
Yes, Mr. Carrera.
The April 13 meeting that Mr. Coulter is going to do, is that going to be listed as a Select Board meeting in case we show up?
It is, Madam Chair, through you.
Oh, yes, please.
It's not advertised as a Selectmen's meeting. If three members are going to show up, please communicate with us, and we will post that. Well, tomorrow would be too late, because it's Thursday. So perhaps I could speak with each member and see who is showing up and make it a so that we avoid any type of open meeting law violation. Scott, I thank you for raising that issue. It will be on SMAC, and it will be, there will be access to it.
I will be there. I'm a Selectman. I'd like to be there, because none of this information has been run down through this table, as far as I know of. I had different things that I was working on for trash rates and stuff like that, and about trying to give the people 80-plus a break that own their own homes, not just every 80 person.
Just by, to clarify, there'll be no decisions made at this meeting. This is just sharing information on where we are. There would be no policies made, no decisions made, no votes taken.
All right. I'll trust Lou to be there. I won't show to make things. But I think we got to look at, if we're going to have the meetings, we're going to have to, you know, maybe say it's information meeting with Tom and Select Board, so that if three of us do happen to show.
I think that's a good recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, moving right along to our next agenda item, Citizens' comments. Are there any Citizens? Yes, Chet, please approach the table, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chet Collins, Precinct 1, 30 Barnes Road, FinCom member. Tonight, I come with a couple of concerns. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Robertson, Lou Gito, for reelection, and also you being reappointed as Chair and Vice Keep of Chair Kavy. And the members of the Board, thank you for listening. I've been asked from a lot of people in town about three issues, and I guess I'm the spokesperson for them, and hopefully I do justice for them. The first one is, I don't know what we call them today, vagrants or homeless people. I don't know what the proper term is, but we've had some issues in town in the past with homeless people at the train station and such. Recently, this past Thursday, at St. James Church, I was setting up the altar and things like that, and I went to the back of the church, to the front door, the entrance, and there was a person sitting at the door. He had a nice sport coat on, nice trousers, he had shoes on, and he was like talking to himself a little bit. I didn't think that, but I thought he was just waiting to come into church. So I went back towards the altar, and I came back 15 minutes later. The man was getting into his sleeping bag. So obviously, I had to ask the person to leave, and he was nice about it. He left, and he asked what time service was, and I told him 7 o'clock. Well, he came back for the service. Okay, so that was all taken care of. A week or so past, at Immaculate Conception, we have a policy, the Starfield Father McDermott, to leave the vestibule doors open, so people that need to come in to get warm would be able to get warm. They can't come inside the church. They can't go downstairs into the fellowship hall, not fellowship hall, the hall. But a week or so ago, vagrants, homeless people, whoever you want to call them, came into the church, into the vestibule, defecated on the stairs, and urinated in the pots. Since then, we rectified the situation about the doors. I don't know what the town could do about it. I know it's been an issue in the past, and a lot of people are upset about it, especially people going to church at 9:00 at Immaculate, having to go through the front door or the side door, and, you know, seeing this on the stairs. It's unacceptable. I know these people have issues, problems, whatever, and a lot of people, like the last time, I tried to help a couple of people down at the train station, and they didn't want any help. You know, I tried to get them, talk to them about getting housing, you know, things like that, and they didn't want any help. So you can't help somebody that doesn't want to help, that doesn't want help. So I don't know what's going to happen on this, on this side, maybe Mr. Coulter with the police chief or the VNA or whatever may help. So that's one concern. The second concern, the people that asked me to speak, as you know, I don't come in front of the pro-comment, so I'm trying to get all my thoughts right here. The second one is the signalization of Page Street and Turnpike Street, especially in the mornings, like 9:00 to 9:30. The cycling of the light, taking a left onto Page Street, sometimes it goes two cycles, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's eight. And it happens at night also, between 7:00, 7:30, 8:00, same thing happens. And it comes down to the point where people are taking a left and turning on red, which is not legal, obviously, but, you know, they have to go down to the residence or whatever they have to do. So that was another issue that people asked me to bring for the Board. The third one is the town website. I know we just redid the website, but a lot of people find it difficult to navigate the website, you know, trying to find information. If you go on, I know I had, what I do is I signed in, so I, you know, get other information. But a lot of people don't want to sign in, because they didn't want to put their email address in, their names, and things like that. So I know it's probably young, infancy, you know, starting out, and I know it's going to be improved, but it's just that it makes it very difficult, Mr. Coulter, to navigate that website.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
To Chet, thank you for raising that, Chet. In fact, just today, we're scheduling a public information on how to navigate the website. We're going to demonstrate it for the entire community. There was a gentleman in here last week, and one of you were with me when he came in. I'm trying to remember who it was. And he had that issue. We called Trish up, and she gave him a private lesson on how to navigate it, and he walked out an expert. So we're going to do that for the general public and demonstrate online how to navigate the website. So it's a great, it's a great, it's great input.
Yeah, my wife, Emery, she's a teacher in Brockton, and she's very tech-savvy, computer-wise and all that, and I'm trying to show her to her, and she goes, I don't know how to do this. You know, it's like she tries with me, you know.
We'll take that head-on.
Yeah, she did all my passwords and all that stuff for me.
Got it.
But thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chet.
Thank you so much, Chet. Any other Citizens' comments? And, Mr. Coulter, I see you taking notes, so you're going to address the three issues. Okay, thank you very much. Any other Citizens' comments? All right. Moving right along to item number six, which is Consent Agenda. One is Approval of Open Meeting Session Minutes of March 14, 2023. The second is Water Connection Application at Panthon Marcus Valley 41 Erica Drive. Does anyone want to pull any of those agenda items?
Just to get a hold of March 22.
Yes?
I had to send comments. Just a small change. Just interrupting.
Sorry, Mr. Gito, could you just turn on your microphone? Would you please turn on your microphone, but I'm unable to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a word "start" instead of "star," which related to the end date on when we were going to have a new fire station at 400 Prospect Street. And it didn't get reflected in the minutes, and I think that I sent something to Gilda, and I think she sent it to you. So if those things are acceptable to you, we can approve those with the amendment.
Yes. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Can I get a second? Motion to accept the consent agenda items, the...
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to, just for the clarification on the wording that Mr. Gito described on how it affected the wording on the fire station. Could you repeat that?
The wording in the original motion would have said that the work in the fire station would have started in 2024. It's actually going to end in August of 2024.
Okay, okay.
And that's the, that was the point that I was raising.
Okay, all right, thank you. I didn't hear it correctly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I vote aye, but I'm going to abstain from the minutes, because I wasn't present at that meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, vote it as amended, please.
All right. Moving right along, item number seven. Authorize the issuance of $320,730, $730,112 for Board Anticipation Notes pursuant to GLC 44, Section 17. Ms. Newt, Town Treasurer, please step forward. Please state the issue and what action you would like the Board to take.
First, I'd like to say congratulations to the both of you for getting back on and also being appointed as the Chair and the Vice Chair. It's very nice to see people that I recognize still. You're welcome. that I recognize still. You're welcome. So what I would like is for the Board to discuss, vote, and approve the $730,112 and the $320,000 ban, bond anticipation note tonight. The $730,112 ban is for the South Elementary School feasibility study, and the $320,000 ban is for the railroad station building remodeling. These were approved last year also as bans, and we are just rolling them over. I did send a summary of what you would be reading and talking about tonight, and I did make a mistake. I had said that it was, both of them were three-month bonds. One of them is a three-month bond, the other, the elementary school bond is for 12 months. So I did want to correct that. I do want to remind, and I'm sure you're going to read it out loud, that it does, the vote of the Board needs to be read out loud, and that also that the documents do need to be signed tonight because we will have a courier here tomorrow around 11 o'clock to pick up the signed documents. So that is what I'm asking of the Board tonight.
Thank you. Do you have an updated version so we could read it into the record?
Of the vote of the...
Because the one about the ban change, other than...
The only...
What you want us to read into the record, does it have the incorrect ban dates?
Yes.
Do you have an updated letter with the correct ban dates?
So the only change that was made was on the vote of the Select Board. The original that was sent out last week or about 10 days ago was that it said that it was at the meeting held on April 5th. The new vote of the Select Board reads April 11th.
Okay, so the, the document inside the package that's posted on the website is correct. It references April 11th.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Thank you. Vice Chair, thank you very much, Ms. Newt. Vice Chair Kevy, can you read that into the records, please?
Absolutely. And this year, I think I might invest in some, some auctioneer lessons.
Yeah.
I think we could probably get through some of this stuff a lot faster if I, if I wasn't such a slow reader, but...
We could share a reading if you would like.
No, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the Board held April 11th, 2023, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody. So, and I just read this straight out, right? I don't have to say I make a motion too. Okay, so voted, that we hereby determine in accordance with General Law, Chapter 70B, that the cost of the South School Elementary feasibility study project authorized by the vote of the town passed on December 8th, 2021, Article 5, being financed with proceeds of the Series B note defined below, together with, hold on a second, I'm just going to increase the size of this a little bit, my eyes aren't what they used to be, together with all other bonds and notes of the town previously issued to pay costs of this project, does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant, and we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law, Chapter 70B. Further voted, to approve the sale of a $320,000 5.50% general obligation bond anticipation note, Series A, the Series A note, of the town dated April 14th, 2023, and payable July 21st, 2023, to Peoples' Bank at par and accrued interest, if any. Further voted, to approve the sale of a $730,112 5.50% general obligation bond anticipation note, Series B, the Series B note, and together with the Series A note, the notes, of the town dated April 14th, 2023, and payable April 12th, 2024, to the Peoples' Bank at par and accrued interest, if any. Further voted, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 22nd, 2023, and a final official statement dated March 29th, 2023, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted, the Town Treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant event disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council of the Town, which undertaking shall be, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference to the notes for the benefit of the holder of the note from time to time. Further voted, we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted, that any certificates or documents related to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to the document by electronic mail in a .pdf file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of manually executed counterpart signature page in such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted, that each member of the Select Board, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such action and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. Further certified, that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda includes, included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the Town Clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the Town Clerk was located, or if applicable, in accordance with the, with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remaining so posted to the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the note or taking an executive session, all in accordance with General Law of Chapter 30A, subsections, or sections 18 through 25, as amended. This is dated April 11th, 2023. Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Shall we take a second just so we can sign this letter now, and then you could take it with you?
There's actually a whole bunch of documents. It's not just that one, unfortunately, yeah.
So I'll sign it after the meeting. Thank you very much.
And if, if you need to come in tomorrow morning, if it could happen before 10 o'clock, that would be great. I'd be more than happy to wait until tomorrow. I just want to make sure it's going to be done tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much.
Nobody gets to leave until this is signed.
There we go. That's even better.
We'll do the best we can to get it signed tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you also.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along to our next item, which is item number nine, acceptance of donation from Friends of the Cape and Reynolds Farm Incorporated, $6,000. Would Mr. Terry step forward and state your name and address, please, and the nature of your business?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Richard Terry, 582 Canton Street, precinct date. I'm here tonight to, first of all, say congratulations to you, Madam Chair, and to you, Lou Gieto, for being reelected. And I'm here tonight to ask you to accept a donation from the Friends of the Cape and Reynolds Farm of $6,000 so that we can allow a landscape architect to make some alterations to the bid set for the Cape and Farm Dog Park, specifically the portion of the Dog Park. So it will make us more eligible to receive a grant from the Stanton Foundation, which is a private organization that funds up to 10 dog parks per year in Stoughton, rather in Massachusetts, and they will grant up to $225,000. We are in that category. And so our, the landscape architect that had helped us design this originally has passed away, and the Stanton Foundation has been utilizing a landscape architect called Leonard Warner, and they recently worked on a project in Saugus for the Stanton Foundation for the Saugus Dog Park. So they, they understand the needs to make these alterations. In my letter to you, some of the things that they wanted us to change was the height of the fence from four feet to five feet, the ground cover from wood chips to something more easily maintained, and add in agility items within side the Dog Park, and a few other things. So we at the Cape and Farm were advised by procurement that funds that are currently designated for the project at the Cape and Farm could not be used for this particular item. So the Friends voted to donate $6,000 for this, and it'll, considering the fact that Stanton Foundation was so willing to advise us so we could be more eligible, we feel that we have a good chance of winning this grant for the entire amount, which $225,000 or 90% of the hard costs of engineering, construction, et cetera. And so we fall into that category. So I'm asking you to please accept our donation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? No questions, so we have a motion and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, yes. We do, we can accept it, and we do accept it.
Thank you very much. What, one last thing. When, Article 28, which I will be presenting to town meeting for additional funding to complete this project, when that is voted yes, the Friends will be back here asking you to accept a $50,000 donation to help subsidize some of the work that will be done then. So I hope to see you soon.
Madam Chair? I just want to say that I've had some prior experience with the Stanton Foundation, and they're an extraordinary group to work with. They stand behind their pledges, they're very generous with their grants, and I thank you for putting together a format that I know that they're looking for to meet with the, to meet the criteria they're asking for to fund.
Thank you. Just one side note, we didn't learn about the Stanton Foundation until we were well into this project, and it was at a, I was going to vote, and one of the people working the poll said, by the way, get in touch with the Stanton Foundation. By that time, our plans had been pretty well developed, and thankfully, our town engineer, Mark Tisdale, made a call and furthered that endeavor. So it's been a long haul, but thank you very much. Who do I give the check to? The Treasurer or the accountant or the Chair?
You can give the check to me, and I'll make sure our town accountant gets that check.
Then I'll bring it to the Select Board's office.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Terry.
Motion, we send a letter to the Friends...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Moving right along to our last item of business of the day, is adoption of the Committee for Veterans Affairs Committee Charter. Sean Patrica, please step forward and state the nature of your business.
Hello.
Hello there.
First, I want to congratulate you two, and just say that there's nothing more patriotic than, than getting involved in politics, and, and I have learned in my very, very short time that it's definitely a tough job, and I'm very happy that my beginning of this career had all of you here to help me along the way, and you've been great. Thank you. So it's a kind of a double thing. Yes, so I'm here today to express my support in the forming of the Committee for Veterans Affairs for the Town of Stoughton. Attached is the charter, and it's made to be somewhat vague, but this committee, excuse me, this committee will have a purpose. It's in support of the veterans. It will be answerable to the Select Board, and it'll be 11 members and composed of 10 voting members. That 11th member would be the VSO of the town, much like the Memorial Square Committee. Now, without getting into the minutia of it, I want to, I want to say this was brought up by several members of the community, and to be honest, before then, I was already looking into it. Now, we're running into an issue where a lot of the well-known veterans' clubs, which we would rely on a lot for support for a lot of our events, unfortunately, the membership is falling, and we have to have a plan here for that. And with a committee, we'd have many people involved. They would be responsible for the planning and, and the creation with support of the VSO of those parades and other patriotic events, and also for the maintenance and, and taking care of the, the military equipment we have at, like, Vaxton Park. They would, you know, if there's an issue, they would vote or however it's structured and bring it to the Select Board's attention. And with a full committee, it's many hands, and I think, I think this is a prime opportunity to create this thing and let it kind of live beyond us.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Madam Chair, thank you, and thank you, Sean. This committee is, is a wonderful idea, and it's a very responsible thing on Sean's behalf to organize prior to, to moving on. Sharon and I will be very active in working with this committee as we coordinate events. Sharon made it crystal clear when I spoke to her, however, that she'll be fully engaged in coordinating, but she will not speak at events. I told her we have five people who would be very willing to fill in for her as a speaker at veterans' events. We also met today, Sean and I met today with the VSO from Easton, and with your blessing, we'll be signing a district compact. So until Sean returns, which we've got an over-under of about six months, if you want to join the pool, during that period, the, the VSO obligations, which can only be fulfilled by a veteran, will be fulfilled by the VSO from the Town of Easton, and he's a highly credible VSO. Sean recommended him highly. Sharon recommended him highly, and after meeting him today, I concur. We're very fortunate to have him. So we'll be executing a contract with the Town of Easton to provide that portion of that responsibility that only a veteran can approve. And we did this in the Town of Kingston. We formed a district with the Town of Plymouth as a budgetary necessity, and it worked out beautifully. And I can tell from the gentlemen in Easton that Sean introduced to us... beautifully, and I can tell from the gentleman in Easton that Sean introduced to us, it'll be a seamless transition. One other thing I want to announce is that Sean will be moving on to the state, and I strongly supported him doing that because of the incredible career opportunities that he'll have. But through this VSO district exchange, it affords us the time to not fill that spot immediately, and if Sean does not enjoy the state, his seat will be kept warm in case he wishes to return. So, I know you all have feelings about Sean's service, so I'd like to turn the mic back to the Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. Do any of my fellow board members have comments? Oh, Mr. McChrisky.
Just real quick, 11 members, unless this is going to be a committee to just do events, I wasn't clear, that would be different, but an 11-member board, if it's going to be a board, and you mentioned would advise us, I don't really see, and I, fine tune it for me. Is this sort of like an events committee, and they're just going to do, run events for veterans and be involved? Because a lot of that authority is the Select Boards.
Oh.
And I don't want to give away authority of this board to an 11-member board that is going to try to do different things. So, just fine tune it for me so I understand it fully.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. So, I should probably go a little bit more into that. So, we have a committee now. It's the Veteran Memorial Sign Committee, and it's a singular-purpose committee, but it was formed a while ago, and to the point where I couldn't find when the last person was officially added to the committee. And one of the, one of the most repeated statements I get from a lot of our younger vets coming, in fact, just in today and yesterday, I've had four people coming back from deployments to Jordan saying, "How can I get involved? How can I, you know?" Dude, they don't unfortunately want to join local veterans' clubs, or they're in a part of their life where that just doesn't make sense. They have young children, and they just want to spend time with them, but they want to get involved with the town government and maybe the veterans' support. With this 11-person committee, I would suggest, and again, all of this is up to the Select Board, that we attempt to absorb the Veteran Memorial Committee that is a singular-purpose committee, and into this committee, which then leaves some spots open for the Select Board to fill, it will then, for some, maybe for some more very motivated younger vets that want to be involved, and it will give the committee more than just the events. But again, just like that committee, just like any of this, this is, they will bring everything to the Select Board for approval, and it gives a voice to these people. It's, it allows some transparency in the process and makes the community feel like they're involved with these events.
Okay, so you answered my question.
Thank you.
It's more of a committee just to work on events.
Yes.
That's what I asked. Thank you. And I don't agree with him leaving, for the record, you know? I mean, he's done a great job in the short time he's been here. He's, Sean, you've crossed over from talking to a World War II vet with the utmost respect, and a younger guy that I know that needed a little tough comment, you know, and learning, you know, and you went from one generation to another, and that's commendable. I say all jokingly, I look forward to you coming back, you know? So, but really, good luck. You've earned that opportunity. I hope it works out well for you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, can I add just one more thing? Towns with these types of committees also are eligible for many grants. A lot of these VA grants require that we have a committee in place so that they can distribute whatever that grant's purpose is, and for whatever the reason the VA puts on that, it just makes us more eligible for grants, and that's a win-win for us.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that doesn't persuade you.
Thank you, Mr. Mc. Mr. Quin.
I'll probably be the most sad one to see you go, Sean. But maybe you could come back. But on this, I think we got to look at it a little deeper on this. I don't think we can hash it out tonight or vote on anything. This seems to be, I have some concerns I'd like to add into it, but I don't want to do it tonight. I just want to say, Sean, thank you. I enjoyed when we talked over things and how you dug in and found things, and you and Sharon were a great team, great team. I'm glad she's still here, but, you know, at least Tom is doing the right thing. He could potentially hold it open. Sometimes it's not good at the state, but thanks for everything.
Thank you for those kind words.
Vice Chair KB?
I'm just really going to echo the sentiments of others. You've done an amazing job here. It's been an endless pleasure working with you. Every chance that we've had to work together, it's always been educational, interesting, rewarding, and I'm certainly sad to see you go. I mean, obviously, it's a loss for the town, but it sounds like it's a pretty massive gain for the state, and the work you're going to be doing is critical for a lot of people. And honestly, I'm glad you're the one doing it. I know it's going to get done and get it done right. So, in the grand scheme of things, I think we all benefit from this, and, you know, for some reason, you know, things don't work out. I love the idea that this is, the door's not closing behind you. If you find your way back here, that would be outstanding, but I feel so certain that the work you're going to be doing at the state level is going to be demanding and rewarding and interesting. And we'll keep in touch and see how you're doing. If there's anything you ever need, I think from just about anybody sitting up here, I think you can count on us to support you. And just thank you so much for the time and energy you've put into the veterans of Stoughton. It's been a wonderful experience, and I'm just really grateful to have worked with you within the time we've had, but are you blushing?
Thank you. Oh, yes. Oh, boy. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Gito?
Sean, we haven't had an awful lot of conversations, but each one has been remarkably informative for me, and the thing that you're talking about now and the, your understanding of the needs and desires of the people who are coming back from Afghanistan and Iraq are much different from the ones from World War II. And we need to, and I think perhaps the clubs need to understand that as well. So, we need to, I think, perhaps develop a different paradigm than we've had in the past in terms of dealing with the issues, and perhaps you can, as you are working in the state, you might be able to give us some advice on how we can do that, because the people who are coming back now did the same kind of job that the people did 50 years ago, and we owe it to them to provide what they need as well. On your career path, I would just point out to you that we had an environmental person working in the engineering department about 50 years ago, more or less, who ended up being the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency.
Wow.
So, don't set your sights low.
Wow, that's amazing. Thank you for those kind words also.
I want to say personally, thank you very much for your service to the town. I have enjoyed working with you. I have attended your coffee hours, and you've brought a freshness to the area, and working with Sharon as well, that was a great partnership. But I understand, you know, it's a great opportunity for you, and I'm so glad of the offer that Mr. Calder put on the table, and I fully support that. You will be missed, but we understand. Don't forget about us, though.
I won't.
I'm in support of your committee as well. I see it as an opportunity, you stated this, it's a committee to administer and qualify for grants, and I know a lot, several of the veterans, not a lot, but several of the veterans have approached me advocating for a committee such as this. So, thank you very much. And your last working, this is your last working week with the town?
Yes, yes, Friday is my last day.
Thank you. So, is there a motion, or are we going to table it?
Madam Chair, we're not looking for an motion at this time.
Okay.
We'd like to get the input of members individually, and we'll work with the gentleman from Easton as we redraft it. But I do want to point out to Mr. McChrisky's comments, this is not intended to be a policymaking board, but it is intended to be a place that people are looking to go to contribute, because as Sean pointed out, many of the clubs have dwindled in their memberships, but they're full of energy to get things done, whether it's putting flags on graves or helping coordinate events, or being, you know, active members in serving other members. So, I would like the opportunity to fine tune it a bit once I receive feedback from each of the members.
Great. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you all.
If there is no further business for our board, I accept a motion to adjourn.
So may it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you.